Krista, you ready?
Yes, okay. Okay, welcome everybody to the December 13th, 2021 Board of Education Business Meeting. And I have a motion to adjourn the executive session and return to our general meeting. A motion from Tom and a second from Michelle. All in favor? Mrs. Donovan is not here today. She is out. And can we all rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remind everyone of our that, that's okay, that our campuses are all smoke-free and we have emergency exits in the back of the auditorium, on the side of the auditorium, behind the stage. In the case of an emergency, please calmly make your way to one of those exits. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve minutes from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated November 15th, 2021. Motion, please. Xavier, and a second from Michelle. All in favor? That's everyone, thank you. We have a few FYI's on the agenda. Budget appropriation reports for general school lunch and special aid funds, budget transfers, revenue status reports. Any questions or comments on those? It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the October 2021 treasurer's report. Motion? Bill, and a second from Teresa. All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on November 23rd, 2021, and December 8th, 2021. Motion? From Teresa, and a second from Bill. All in favor? That's everyone, thank you. Okay, that brings us to Board Member Communications. Michelle?
Yeah, I don't know if Jim's gonna talk about it as well, but last week, I forget which day, NISBA had a legislative and budget overview webinar that I participated in, or listened to, actually. And they discussed the year in review. They talked about a number of priorities for the upcoming year, restoration of foundation aid and transportation. This is for the entire state, for the New York State School Boards. They want to focus on student health and mental health, as well as nutrition. They talked about the digital divide. I mean, I think here in Huntington, we're pretty lucky that we've got one-to-one devices and appropriate technology for our students. They mentioned environmental sustainability, the virtual open meetings, so that extending, or actually not extending, I think approving the ability to have virtual meetings, depending upon what's going on. The tax cap reform. And then they spent a lot of time talking about bus issues and the bus driver shortage. And I think that was it. They tried to stay away from COVID-specific things. I think that covered it, right, Jim?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. It was designed to be a preview of NISBA's legislative priorities as they pertain to the upcoming '22 budget cycle, 2022-23 budget cycle. And some of the things I'll touch upon in terms of the ECB recommendations, but that nicely sums it up. Thank you.
Who else? Do you have any, Jim?
I was going to ask, Dr. Ecker, you haven't seen the claims audit report for November?
It's not complete yet.
Okay, so as soon as that's available, I will share that with the board and it'll be put on the next public agenda. So many things happening in a short period of time. Obviously, we are attempting to deal with the current rise in positive cases. We are continuing to do the best we can with that. Again, I commend our staff and students for continuing to move forward. We're trying to leave our opportunities intact as best we can. And I will say, everybody is really doing the best they can inside of our school facilities to make sure that we are taking every needed safety precaution. No need to belabor that. Holidays are obviously upcoming. It does present with concerns, and we will address them accordingly. A couple of things that have been discussed recently. There was a Board of Regents meeting this morning. There has been quite a bit of discussion on the testing program as it pertains to the current school year and accountability moving forward. The state, the New York State Education Department is considering a, well, they have a proposed, on the table, a proposed federal accountability waiver that they may submit. They are soliciting public comment, I believe, through December 15th. It is for anyone, not just for educators, for parents, for students, for educators, administrators, teachers, staff members, et cetera, to make voices heard. There are definitely pros and cons with continuing to halt the accountability process. But again, there is a lot of ground to make up in every school district, and certain school districts more than others. And obviously, we are doing the best we can here to address the needs of every child as they pertain not only to their general academic program, but to the experiences they've had over the past two years. There are still questions about APPR as it pertains to this year. They are discussing at length graduation measures, and they are piloting different programs throughout the state that move away from Regents exams as exit criteria. More to follow there. And I believe I've mentioned this before, but I can tell you that our teachers, our students, our staff, they're doing a really nice job trying to make sure that our program here, instructionally, the learning program, is as rigorous as it should be. And again, technology, we are well-equipped as a district in terms of technology, particularly as it pertains to what we did or what we accomplished over the past two years. But technology has its place, and we do want to emphasize that conversation, face-to-face conversation, and writing should not be lost because we are trying to incorporate technology to the nth degree. So we do want to make sure that we are addressing our students' educational needs from all angles. And we'll talk about that a little bit further as we get into a presentation later this evening. I believe the board saw the tax-based growth factor that will be used to calculate the tax levy limit for '22-'23. Obviously, 2% will be 2% this year in terms of the CPI. Inflation is where it is. And obviously, our growth in Huntington exceeds that from some of the surrounding areas in terms of that tax base, which will ultimately help us in terms of preparing the '22-'23 budget. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, it's been reinforced in numerous venues through numerous agencies. The Educational Conference Board, which is made up of, I believe, seven different prominent state agencies across the state. They are recommending the continued full phase-in of foundation aid. They are recommending the fully funded expense-based aids moving forward. We want to preserve those categories, not lump them into one composite category because that does not serve the needs of specific school districts, and you can't follow where the money goes. And the other piece is multi-tiered investments in mental health, career and technical education, and UPK are still on the radar of these agencies. Again, lots of things going on in district. Inductions, pride award ceremonies, open houses. Jack Abrams and Woodhall held those virtually last week. We are really doing the best we can to make sure that experiences are not compromised, but they are implemented as safely as we possibly can make them. Our fall athletic season ended successfully. Our winter athletic season has begun successfully. Again, we are going to try and keep things going in a manner that our students have earned and in a manner that keeps them safe at the same time. And I think that about covers it. I'd like to commend the National Honor Society on two things. They held a really cute gingerbread workshop a couple of weekends ago, actually this past weekend, and I commend them for setting foot into frigid waters in the Bay of Huntington, something I, I will do a lot of things. Cold water is not my thing, but Lynda Roth and the National Honor Society withstood freezing cold temperatures in the essence of supporting the Special Olympics, so we commend them for that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to our first public commentary. As I've said before, it's great that we have been able to have such decorum in our meetings, but we do welcome and encourage the public to speak. First on, our first public, sorry, for our first public commentary, the first speakers should be four items for discussion and action, which are listed on our agenda. Today, there are seven. And then with time remaining in the 30 minutes allotted, if anyone else would wish to speak, they would also have three minutes to speak and identify themselves as their affiliation to the district. So if anybody would like to speak at this time, please come to the podium. Okay. Can you give it one more, one more pause? Okay, if not, that brings us to our first item for discussion and action, and I'm going to go take a seat in the audience.
As you should.
All right.
And I'm going to invite Mr. Eric Reynolds to introduce our holiday gifts.
Good evening. Tonight, we are going to be treated to the sounds of the season by student musicians from Huntington High School. For your enjoyment, our chamber orchestra, Septet, will perform two selections in diverse genres, followed by the high school chamber choir singing favorite holiday music from cartoons. Please join me in welcoming our talented students and their dedicated teachers, Mr. James DiMeglio and Ms. Victoria Garberino, as they treat you to the sounds of the season. At this time, I'd like to introduce the chamber orchestra to the stage.
I'm lucky I remembered my passwords. I have so many passwords in my new job, so it's new devices. All right. Okay, well, that was wonderful. Thank you to all of our musicians and our music faculty.
Not that it takes reminding, because we see it every day, but all should know, we are truly blessed to have a tremendous student body, to have a fantastic staff. This is just one additional piece of evidence of that this evening. So I'd like to thank Mr. DiMeglio, Ms. Garberino, and the Chamber Orchestra Choir for their absolutely fantastic performance tonight. It's just what, just what the doctor ordered.
And that brings us to our next presentation.
Yes. We also don't want our school community, our district community, to lose sight of the fact that we are still moving forward with a number of educational initiatives in district. And tonight, I am privileged to turn over the microphone to Ms. Beth McCoy, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, and Dr. Teresa Garsani, our STEM Director. We are in the process of moving toward implementation of our new computer science and digital fluency standards, and they're going to speak to us on that matter this evening. So thank you both for being here and for taking on the task.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight, we are excited to present on the new computer science and digital fluency standards implementation, which is required by the New York State Education Department by the 2023 school year. This mandate is one that is welcomed as This mandate is one that is welcomed as the skills encompassed in these standards will help to prepare our children for the jobs of the future, communicate and learn safely in an online world, and enable students to critically think and problem solve using technology throughout all aspects of life. Dr. Grasani and I will share the timeline for implementation, the vision, K to six and seven, twelve structures for implementation, staffing needs, and certification requirements. This slide presents an overview of the implementation timeline provided by the New York State Education Department. It is in alignment with our plan for Huntington. So at this point, we are past the awareness building stage, which took place from December 2020 to August 2021. Capacity building, which began in September 2021 and will be completed in August 2023. And year one implementation, as you can see, is slated for September of 2023 through August 2024. And full implementation, K to twelve, which means that all standards will need to be implemented in the grade bands, K to twelve, by 2024, September of 2024. Our vision for the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards is that every student will know how to live productively and safely in a technology-dominated world. This includes understanding the essential features of digital technologies, why and how they work, and how to communicate and create using those technologies. So now I'll turn things over to Dr. Grasani, who will talk a little bit about the organization of the standards and the key concepts.
Good evening, thanks for having me. So the first thing I want to talk about is the organization of the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Learning Standards, and they're divided into five key concepts. The first one is impacts of computing, which deals with society, computing ethics, accessibility, and career paths. Computational thinking, which is modeling, simulations, data analysis, algorithms, and programming. Network and systems design, which is our hardware and software. Cybersecurity, which is risks, safeguards, response. And digital literacy, digital use, and digital citizenship. Now, these standards are grouped into grade-level bands. So the first band is K one, two, three, four through six, seven, eight, nine through twelve. And students are expected to master standards at the end of each band. Here's an example of one of the standards, impact of computing. And I picked this one because we call it, it's an unplugged activity. And most people think computer science, they think a device. So this is something I wanted to share with you that came from the New York State website. And the first band, if you look at K one, students will discuss the differences between playing a board game and a video game, or just mailing a letter and getting a text message. And then as we go through the bands, I won't read them all, but if you look at maybe four, six, students will discuss how technologies such as GPS systems have influenced communication, relationships, travel, and cultural and customs. And then now, as we get to high school, the nine, twelve band, students will research how to better access information or resources, and that affect population, develop a strategy, or a recommendation to address the issue. So you, you can see the progression right through K through twelve.
Sorry. Just going back to this slide, this is very fortunate for us because this happens to break where our buildings break. So it really is very, it's really good for us for implementation purposes. Moving on to the next slide, we plan on delivering the standards as followed at the K to six level. One of the reasons why having that librarian at each elementary building is so important is that we're able to deliver a traditional library media period as well as a technology integration period, which is a collaborative period with the library media specialist and the classroom teacher. And that second period is where we plan on delivering a lot of the K to six standards and implementing it in that period with the teacher and the librarian. At STEM, we have a little bit of a different setup because of the Innovation Lab, so it will be delivered during the library media period and the Innovation Lab experience. As you may recall, in twenty, twenty twenty, before the pandemic, we wrote a grant with nine other districts. I think we submitted it at the end of January. I'm not really sure how the year was going to go. We were finally awarded that grant in the spring of 2021. So we were recently awarded it after writing it quite some time ago. The grant allows us, well, it provides us with $500,000 a year for five years for those nine districts. And we are allocated 12 teachers per year to be trained in the Computer Science Standards, resources and materials that go along with the standards, and professional development to support their growth so that they can come back and turnkey. So we are currently training our first group of 12 teachers, along with the other districts in the Western Suffolk Bosse's Consortium. There's also a summer institute, which was four days that our teachers attended this summer, as well as six two-and-a-half-hour professional development sessions. We also were recently told in the last week, when we had a meeting with the Western Suffolk Bosse's Consortium, that we will have a day of live PD from one of the presenters in district, where teachers can meet, plan lessons, and really get ourselves ready for this implementation over the next few years. We have one teacher per grade band in our district that is also a curriculum writer with the group from Western Suffolk, and they participate in additional two-and-a-half days of curriculum writing. And again, all of this is funded through the Smart Start Grant. So this is a little bit repetitive, but we have several K to eight librarians in this first group because it does go through K to, through, through grade eight. But we also have classroom teachers that are attending because we felt that if we wanted the buy-in from the teachers to work with the library media specialist, we really needed their expertise to work with the library media specialist to plan these lessons and get the professional development. And now I'll turn it over to Teresa, who will discuss the middle level.
Okay, so we're going to be implementing this at the middle level and as well as in the high school. This slide speaks to seventh grade and eighth grade. We offer now, it's called Info Tech, which is point two-five. We're just going to change the name and call it Computer Science Seven. And that's going to focus on cybersecurity and digital literacy. Tech's Technology Seven, which we presently order as a, we offer as a point five, will include the impacts of computing, computational thinking, network, and systems design. And grade eight, same, Technology Eight is a point five, and that really focuses on network and design systems. In order to kind of meet the needs of the standards, we, we will be requesting curriculum writing to kind of adjust our present curriculum in order to meet the needs of the new standards. Now at the high school, nine through twelve, all students will be required to take the Project Lead the Way Computer Science Essentials course, which is a full year, either in ninth grade or 10th grade, beginning in 23, and then moving on to the school year of 24, 25. Once that's completed, then in 2024, 25, we would like to offer AP Computer Science Principles. And then from there, 25 to 26, we would like to explain, expand on our computer science pathway and offer cybersecurity. And then the prerequisite in 25, 26 would be AP Computer Science Principles for AP Computer Science A, which we presently offer. And Principles would also be the prerequisite when we offer cybersecurity. And to make, if this is a little confusing, here's a, here's a chart for you. So here you can see grade seven is Computer Science Seven, Technology Seven. Grade eight is Technology Eight. Grade nine and 10 would be Computer Science Essentials. We've kind of split the cohort over two years. And then, once we off, they get through the Computer Science Essentials, we'd like to offer the Principles course, and then the cybersecurity course with Principles being the prerequisite.
I'm sure there might be questions on this slide, but we'll take them at the end. So just reviewing the certification requirements. For the elementary level, a New York State certified teacher that is certified in grades K through six can teach the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Learning Standards by integrating Computer Science and digital literacy lessons and units within their teaching assignments. So there's no additional certification needed at the K to six level. At the secondary level, computer science courses must have a teacher who has the Computer Science Certification after September 23, unless they have been teaching Computer Science prior. So in our situation, we're already offering Computer Science courses at our high school. We have a teacher who teaches that, and they would be grandfathered in, and they would have 10 years to get the Statement of Continued Eligibility, the SOS, which would be valid for 10 years from the date it is issued. However, if we're looking to implement and hire in the next couple of years, we would hope to find candidates that have that Computer Science Certification or candidates that are looking to get that within the next 10 years if they start prior to September 2023. To earn the Computer Science Certificate, candidates must complete a total of 12 semester hours of coursework in Computer Science that addresses content in the five concepts. So staffing considerations. Our existing staff will be used in K to six, including the librarian in each elementary building. At the middle level, we have existing Computer Science staff, but there's also another course that is on the, on the board agenda tonight. If that course is approved, it is possible that that Computer Science teacher might be used for that particular course, and we would have to backfill for the Computer Science. Again, that is pending approval, and if that's the plan that we would need. Either way, it would be a point eight, but it might be a point eight backfill. At the high school level, we would need to increase by 1.4 in the first year of implementation to provide the Computer Science Essentials course to 50% of the grade nine students. The following year, 24, 25, we would need an additional increase of 1.4 to continue to provide this course to the rest of the students that did not take it in ninth grade. And then if we decided to expand the offerings so that after students take this Computer Science Essentials course, they can take Principles, they can take AP Computer Science A, they could also take a cybersecurity course. That would be a possible increase of point two in year three of implementation. Our goal here is to provide every student with access and mastery of Computer Science content. And then we want to offer them other opportunities, if this is the way that they would like to go through their elective process throughout their high school experience in Huntington. So though, although staffing is needed, we believe this plan will provide all students with opportunities to access and master content to prepare themselves for the future, their future experiences living in a world full of technology. Before I move on to the next slide, I did also just want to mention that each grade band, we do have to provide instruction in each grade band. However, it is not, at this point, credit-bearing at the high school level. So it's not a required credit, although every student must take a class. So I just wanted to, that's something that we actually checked with the state. It is possible that at some point, it will become part of the 22, or it will be in addition to the 22, but at this time, it's a requirement, but it's not part of the required number of credits. And I will turn the last slide over to Dr. Grasani.
So Beth, just to clarify, that course currently, it counts as an elective credit, so it does contribute to the 22.
Correct, yes.
Just not a required piece of the 22 credit package, right?
But we're requiring that every student take, is that what you're saying?
That will happen.
They would have to take a Computer Science course at some point between grades nine and 12. That's, that's starting in September of 24. Year one implementation is 23, but by 24, every student will need to have a Computer Science course under their belt at some point between grades nine and 12.
As required by the state or required by us?
As required by the state. So when we were.
That's how we're choosing to address it.
Right, when we were.
We'll let you finish the.
When we were coming up with the plan, this started last spring, these conversations. How can we ensure that every student has access to a course that will provide them with a foundation, but then also give them time to build upon that if that's their area that they'd like to pursue? So we didn't want to make it a requirement in senior year because we felt that it would be too late. So we felt that if we had the requirement in grades nine or 10, those who wish to pursue this will have three years to take additional courses to support that endeavor. But I'll finish that.
But just to piggyback on that, they can actually take the course any time between ninth grade and 12th grade. And you know, their schedule tends to open up as they become upperclassmen. But in order to get this up and running, this is the plan we felt was, would be most successful, to really start to expand that Computer Science pathway. So as you can see, the top five send majors, you can see what they are, and you can look at their, you know, their incomes. This is a starting salary, and there, there's virtually no unemployment. Architectural engineering, computer engineering, aerospace engineering. We, you know, this is so exciting, and there's so many new careers that are developing every day. But honestly, the, the reason for these Computer Science standards to be implemented is really to, to develop our students who, we want, we want them to be productive and live and, and be, and be safe in this digital world that's now changing as we speak. Thank you. I'm sure you have questions.
We do. Who wants to go first?
I did have a question about the middle school grades. Oh, Michelle, were you talking, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, you asked your question, I have a bunch of questions, so you, you probably have one of my questions.
I'm just curious about the, the middle school grades. That, so this is replacing, or will be instead of Info Tech or in addition to Info Tech? But does it replace something?
Right now, we offer Info Tech, and a lot of, some of the, the standards are in Info Tech, but we wanted to really address it, how the, what do you want to say? We really want to address the standards, so we wanted to call it Computer Science, but some of, some of it's already met in Info Tech. And we're really doing a, we've already started to revise Technology Seven. We started to revise it this year, and it is addressing the new standards. I'm super excited about that, the teachers are really doing some great things. So the middle school is almost the easiest place because we offer the technology class already, it's just a matter of tweaking it so that we get all the standards in. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, and the standard in the K through six is, they have to take one, one segment of it per band, per, per grade band. So either in kindergarten or in first grade, in my understanding of that, right? Each band, you have to take one, and then in, in middle school as well, you have to take one, and then in high school, you have to take one.
When you, when you say take one.
One course, one.
It, it's not, it's not a course in to itself, it's, it's content that's built into the curriculum. And a lot of this, I'm, I'm going to give you an example only because I, I just observed a, a library, a, a digital lesson in the library at, at Washington. And I was beyond impressed because every third-grade student not only understood the terminology, but had concrete knowledge of what an algorithm was by the time they walked out of that classroom, foundational knowledge so that they can then get into coding lessons that will succeed what I saw. So this is actually already happening, but it's not a separate course. It's built into, a part of it's a library and media program, but there's also, both the librarian and the classroom teacher were in that setting that I was observing. And, and honestly, I, I, I'm not going to say was surprised, but that we were that, I was really happy to see that we were that far along so soon when this is, we really don't have to start implementing this until 23, but obviously, in terms of preparing these kids for what they're going to, to experience down the road, to have this all ready in place, and we are taking some educational risks, and we are tweaking our curriculum to make sure that these children are ready. By the time they get to the middle school, they, they're going to be relatively well-versed in basic terminology and an understanding of what programming, what coding is, what programming is, and, and where these things can lead them. And, and again, this is, there's evidence of it today, this is not going to wait until 20, 22, 23. So it's no special course, but built into our existing curriculum.
You know what I was confused by is just what the New York State standard expectation is, like what the prerequisite is.
So, so normally, for kindergarten ELA, there's a list, a set of standards that teachers must implement within that kindergarten year. With these standards, they have to be completed within two years. So over K one, these are the standards.
Okay.
Over two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 12.
That's the benchmark is that, over the course of that band, they have to meet that, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Can I ask one? Can I ask one?
This is like, this is super exciting to me.
A lot of super excitement going on.
Yes, very exciting, the music was exciting, it's like, it's fabulous evening.
It's a super spreader. It beats that.
So with the, the Project Lead the Way course, so we, actually, all the courses, is, do you see something like the biliteracy seal? Like a pathway to, like a specialty by the time they get to 12th grade?
There's a possibility, the state hasn't released any ideas about that, but they're usually, you know, a few years behind where the implementation is.
Yeah. And as far as technology goes, a lot, like the networking piece. And as far as technology goes, a lot, like the networking piece, will we be, will we add some sort of like a lab to, like, let's use InfoTech as an example. So I have a child at home who likes to build computers now, so, and that's something that is different than coding, which I know we do throughout, you know, all of art from K to twelve. Is there any thought to how we would handle the network administration and the, sort of the hardware piece? Because I think that's, that's a career in and of itself.
Well, right now, we use the iPads for the Project Lead the Way course at the high school. Depending on the course, we may need to get like PCs and not use Chromebooks because we have to download, like, certain software, like engineering software, only can, it's huge, and you can only have, use a certain device. So we may have to look into that. But that all depends upon the course, and Project Lead the Way has their own curriculum, and they require certain devices. Like with, with the Project Lead the Way, right now, they require, we use the iPads for that course, so, but to get, use some of that software, we may need to get some, you know, PC devices and not use the Chromebooks.
Yeah, because the iPad doesn't show, like, if you're talking about hardware.
No, yeah.
I'm like envisioning a room with several PCs and, or, yeah, PCs that are networked together, and then kids actually learning how to, to do that hands-on, because that's very different, like I said, than, like you're talking about, like the coding.
The coding, yeah. The engineering software is a big deal.
They learn in computer science, Java and the other stuff.
With the AP Computer Science A, which we also offer right now.
Yeah, because I think there are some kids that like to sit and, or people who have careers where they like to sit and code, but there's other people who like to take things apart and put them back together and deal with the guts of the computer, if you will, as opposed to, you know, sitting behind a screen and typing.
That's the beauty of these standards, is that it doesn't, it's not just the coder or the programmer, which kind of has, computer science, you think, oh, you want to be, you want to be a programmer, but it's so much more than that. There's so many avenues that you can go down, and that's why these standards are just so exciting. Because if you're artistic, this is a great way to express yourself because of some of the things that you'll be able to do, like create apps and gaming programs, and, you know, it's what the kids, that's what they've been brought up on. So this really allows them to expand their horizons in computer science.
I just wanted to add that the courses that we've looked at, we looked at a couple of different vendors. There's also the opportunity for us to write our own courses. These would all go through the subject matter and EDC process. They're, you know, the courses themselves are not exactly set in stone at this time because we may think, you know, in a year, there might be a different course that we think might better meet our needs. But after the research that we've done and the meetings that we've had with various vendors, and Dr. Grisani did a lot of that legwork and then brought it to a group of us to look at, Project Lead the Way does have really amazing content. There is an upfront starter cost, which we're aware of, that we'll have to weigh at that time, but it does become manageable over time. It's really that first year of implementation that's a bit challenging, but they will go through the process. So if there are other courses in the next couple of years that we think might better meet our needs, then that's an opportunity that we can look at at that time. But we wanted to have a variety of options for kids after the fundamental course in ninth and tenth grade, so that they could go the cybersecurity route for those that are interested, or to the AP Computer Science A, and really give people an option, students an option.
And Michelle, just looking at the, I just went on to the state website, pull up standards. There's an area of three sets of standards that cover hardware, software, just the kind of stuff you're talking about, and by the time they get to the middle and high school level, they're doing some pretty cool stuff.
Yeah, that's great.
Michelle, you were asking more about the tinkering aspect and actually building hardware as opposed to software applications and whatnot. So that's part of this as well.
I mean, the challenge I see is a good challenge, it's just enough room in the schedule for kids who, you know, there's only so many periods in the day, and you're a music kid, or.
You can only give up your lunch once, right? You can only give up your lunch once a year.
Well, to that point, I've just, another home run, it seems to me, from Huntington. You know, when we came here, going, starting off with dual language, and then when the STEM school opened up here, my children moved there, and my son was one of the first in these programs, and it's, this is just so exciting, and I guess my question is, kind of piggybacking off of what Michelle was saying, do any of these courses that you have here, because of all the wonderful programs we have on the high school level, does this meet any of the core subjects that are necessary to graduate, so for instance, for math, or art, or something along those lines?
Yeah, our present computer science course counts as a math credit. So it does kind of, you know, establish that, you know, so they don't have to take a math class, they could actually take computer science essentials and get a math credit. So that's kind of cool.
That's really, yeah, that's terrific. And then also to that end, you know, you have, you're saying, you know, I know my son is one of four kids that built their computers together, and this tinkering, you know, aspect is wonderful. I guess, I'm just wondering that, is this, you were mentioning something before, and I'm sorry if I missed it entirely, but you wanted to make sure that it's accessible not to all these students that are necessarily on one particular track at, on one particular age, is there, there are different areas, I'm looking on your graph chart, that they can enter, like in the ninth and tenth grade, if they miss one year, they can enter again in the tenth, and then, so it wouldn't be, it's not exclusionary in any way. I wouldn't want to, you know, see that. I mean, there's multiple avenues to get into the program, entry points, I should say.
Yeah, at the high school level, the only prerequisite for, for the, is the computer science A, which you need to have some computer science background, so you would have to take essentials. And we would, we're really recommending you take AP Computer Science Principles. AP Computer Science Principles is the overarching course, like, you can give it, you know, the state allows you to give it nine through twelve. So that's like your entryway overarching course. We would like students to have that as a prereq before they take AP Computer Science A, but it's, it's not, nothing's mandated, it's, everything's recommended that this is the pathway, and we can tweak it as we go along. So, but the baseline course is the course we have presently, which is the computer science essentials through Project Lead the Way.
This is wonderful, thank you.
And I do think districts are going to implement this in a variety of ways, but I think at some point in the next few years, the state is going to have more strict requirements about when, how, and what, so we just want to make sure that we're well-prepared for that. That's what I was trying to get to when I was discussing the credits before. I think there will be a computer science course requirement, but right now, that's not there.
Well, if you're, you're saying that essentials is required though, right?
It counts as a math, yes.
Okay, so if, my question is, if it's required, how are we accommodating students with special needs that need to take the course?
The AP course?
No, computer science essentials. You're saying everyone's going to take that class? So if you have a child with special learning needs at special education requirements, are they just going to be in a regular science essential, computer essentials class?
We would provide whatever supports are needed based on IEP requirements, whether we need to have an inclusion setting, whatever it is that's needed in order to provide the support to students for them to be successful. That's the way we're going.
Oh, so you envision that there maybe be, might be an inclusion section or a special class section?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I echo everybody's excitement. Anytime you bring forward these new programs to our district, it's always a plus. So thank you for being innovative and thinking this way. I was at a meeting yesterday where the talk of the meeting, this was Sunday night, the talk of the meeting was the metaverse and how technology is changing, and, you know, we're implementing these standards now for twenty-twenty-three. What do we do when it changes in twenty-twenty-three, and we're talking about the metaverse and no longer about networks and technology that exist today? How do we adapt to that, and are we spending too much money now for something that may change in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Well, I think our plan is really to have a foundational course and then other options moving forward, but if we decide that we want to change the courses and have different, as long as they're within the standards that we're required to teach, again, we have not gone through the subject matter and EDC process, so the courses aren't exactly set in stone. This is what we're thinking of at this point, after researching it for the past year. But again, if things are changing exponentially, and we're trying to keep up, we're actually, I think, pretty far ahead of where many other districts are with regards to computer science implementation, and we're going to try to stay as ahead as possible with the changes that are coming our way in the next couple of years as we implement.
I'm sure you are. I would just suggest that, in my own opinion, maybe we not look at New York State Ed for guidance. We have places like Randall Island where Google sits, ran our backyard, maybe we look for a partnership with them, because it seems like they really are at the cutting edge. They really know where things are going.
Absolutely.
So I think the state standards are those that we would have to align with, have to implement. That does not close the door to any other partnerships that we wish to develop, and either of you correct me if I'm wrong, this is a, this projects out to twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. If things change tomorrow, things change next year, this is a fluid process here. Anything on this screen can change between now and twenty-twenty-three, based on what you're saying, Xavier, network, metaverse, there are so many micro and macro cosmic-type things that can happen in this industry that can change anything that we have up on the screen here in, you know, heartbeat, really. So this, this really is more, I think, to lay out where our thinking is, is at. Project Lead the Way and Advanced Placement or College Board, two high-quality, rigorous programs that are going to prepare our kids for college career or anything they choose to do. I don't anticipate that those programs will not stay on the cutting edge as well. We're going to be prepared to tackle whatever it is that we need to tackle in terms of preparing our kids, but this, this is where we stand right now. Tomorrow could be different. Just more than anything else, I wanted you and the community to see our commitment to this.
I like the, I like the vision. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And you know what, to that end, before we go, I think when you look at it, the standards really embody more foundational core competencies, meaning if you look at this stuff like a sequence of math courses, you know, we're doing addition, subtraction, and then multiplication, division, you're talking more about abstract math than the first level of calculus. All of the stuff that we're talking about here are the foundational building blocks, understanding that will make grasping the more advanced concepts that much easier if we can get them to get this good, solid foundation. So I think it's good there. I guess the only thing I'm interested to see is, as the state kind of flushes out their plan and makes this in twenty-twenty-four a graduation requirement, you know, does it become a one credit, is it a half credit, if so, does it displace something else? You know, because that's obviously then going to be a bigger driver on what we offer for courses and how we have to then shoehorn it into a kid's schedule or bump something else off, right?
That's the detail that we don't quite have. So it has been asked, Ms. Alamea worked on this as well, and she contacted the state a few times, and they just haven't given us the exact detail, but we know that we have to implement, and we're excited about it.
If they're shooting for twenty-twenty-four, that's a couple of years away. Interestingly, they're having the conversations about changing graduation measures at the same time, so I don't think these discussions are mutually exclusive. So I think you're spot on, and you're going to see some likely movement in both places.
One last thing, I think there's a way to, we should also be leveraging, we have existing clubs where kids are drawn there because of an interest, and then that interest turns into, oh, I want to take a course in that. So a couple of things I thought of is, we have robotics both at Finley and the high school, and we can, we can grow that. We have an esports team in its second year, and I know that there are esports teams in other schools and at the college level too, where they actually build their own computers, that they actually, I mean, last year it was great because we're virtual, and this year it's great because we're still kind of virtual in some ways, but maybe down the road, we could have an esports lab where kids would actually build their own computers and then compete using them. And then women in STEM, that's another thing where, you know, we, there's just traditionally not enough girls taking those types of classes, and how can we get them to realize that, that they're good at it and they can find a career or a college that, and take, you know, pursue a career and a degree in that.
I think that's another part of this, is that if we offer this to every kid, then it's not a, oh, I don't think that's for me. It's a, I took it and it is for me. So I think that was part of our impetus in knowing that it will be difficult to have every student in ninth or tenth grade take this, and it requires staff, but we felt that we wanted everybody to have the opportunity and the access to the course, and this was the way to go.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Wonderful. Okay. Moving on to our policies, right? I don't have. There's nothing for me to read, right?
First read. He's not for approval this evening.
Right, so I didn't have to do the whole spiel. There's no, okay. Okay, so moving on to our first policy for discussion is public access to records.
Yeah, these are, these are all first reads, so there's no formal board action to be taken this evening. This is a chance. The policy committee has reviewed each of the policies that you're reviewing this evening. Most of them are fairly straightforward, actually, all of them are fairly straightforward, and they reflect either changes in law, changes in regulation, or changes in practice. First has to do with public access to records, and this, we have a very basic, brief policy in place at present. I think it dates back to the initiation of the policy manual. This opens it up a little bit and also highlights certain responsibilities that districts have with respect to providing public access in light of the increased focus on data privacy and, and security.
Obviously, FOIL requests are, I mean, our response to them has to follow the laws, so they really can't be.
Nothing has really changed there, some added detail and some protections afforded in alignment with education law two D.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Directors, access officer, is that an existing position or would that be a new one?
No, that's an appointed position, and.
It is already, right? Yeah, exactly, okay. Let me sure.
Sorry, join.
I should have been calling you officer all this time. I apologize.
Madam Clerk. Okay, any other comments on that one?
This is a chance for the, like I said, these have all been vetted by the policy committee, but a chance for the board to review between now and the next meeting if there are any, so obviously can't be discussed, but if you see something that can be, if you haven't looked at it already, which I know you have, but if you'd like to bring something up at the next meeting in response to conversation this evening, or just your additional review, you can, you can do so. But the changes, actually, some are changed more significantly than others, some are minor changes. This really needed a little bit of an overhaul in terms of both policy and regulation because they were very brief and vague in most places, thirty-three, ten, that is.
Right. Okay, so no other comments or questions for now? Bring your comments and questions for the next meeting if you have any word.
And you're welcome to contact me in between, so I can, I can answer any questions. It just can't be a formal board discussion. It can be a one-on-one with me.
Okay, so policy fifty-six, forty is smoking, tobacco, and cannabis marijuana use.
Okay, so fifty-six, forty, sixty-one, fifty, and seventy-three, twenty, there is one in between there. They've all been revised in light of the passage of Senate, that Senate bill that's actually hyperlink there, which has to do with cannabis where it now stands in New York State.
Right.
Yes, again, I don't know if there's detailed conversation needed separately for fifty-six, forty, sixty-one, fifteen, seventy-three, twenty?
No, no. If you have any questions on any of those, bring them now, please.
Obviously, there are considerable restrictions that have not lessened, but does have to be addressed in that light as well.
Okay.
And the last, just to segue right to it, registration and professional learning, that's a minor change in verbiage there, sixty-two, thirty, sixty-two, thirty R, changing our terminology from a professional development plan to a professional learning plan as currently reflected by the commissioner's regulations. The board has already adopted our professional development plan for the current school year, but moving forward, you'll see we're going to shift the terminology, it's going to be referred to as professional learning.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. So that is our final item for discussion and action then, and brings us to curriculum and instruction, back to Ms. McCoy.
All right. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve Forensics I and II half-year elective courses beginning in the 2022-2023 school year, as reviewed with the district's subject matter and educational development councils and is outlined on the attached.
Okay, I'll take a motion. From Xavier and a second from Michelle. Any discussion questions?
I can just highlight that currently this is a full-year course, um, and this will provide additional flexibility with student schedules as well as with staffing the class as to half-year courses. We still plan on recommending Forensics I and II, but if a student decides that they really aren't interested after the first semester, we can make tweaks as needed. But it really was, it's providing some flexibility, and we would be able to assign two different teachers to Forensics I and II, where sometimes at this point, um, it's a bit challenging for scheduling.
Is that what was driving the creation of this?
Uh, it was really student and teacher flexibility with their schedules. Instead of having it a full-year course, allowing it to be two half-year courses seemed to make things better for all.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Is it really popular course?
It's a very popular course, yes.
Then all in favor? That's everyone, thank you.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the Virtual Enterprises Junior Ventures Career Academy course beginning in the 2022-2023 school year, as reviewed with the district's subject matter and educational development councils and is outlined on the attached.
Okay, sorry, I have a motion. From Xavier, and a second from Tom. Want to give us a?
Yes, sure. This course will enable eighth graders to develop technology and entrepreneurial skills by starting and managing business ventures. It offers a real-world context for learning about business and careers. The classroom is converted into a workplace setting that allows businesses, that business thinking to flourish. Students also apply and reinforce academic concepts across many subjects, and this really could be a two-year course, but we're really looking to have it as an introductory course to students who may be interested in taking virtual, virtual enterprise at the high school level. So we know that there's only so much time in the schedule, and we like to offer this as a half-year elective course for eighth-grade students. Currently, as I know, the question may come up, um, you know, where there is space, someone had mentioned that, um, to me earlier, uh, currently we have students taking a period and a half of algebra, and next year, we anticipate that not everyone will take a period and a half of algebra in eighth grade, so this would be an option for them at that time.
So basically have a half hole in their schedule.
They'll have an extra half, right?
They would have a half, yes.
Okay.
Is there any overlap in this class to some of the things that are covered in, what's it called, tha, they call it facts, family?
Family computers, consumer science? I, I don't believe so, this is a ve, very specific course that, again, the way we're offering the computer science pathway, this might be something that a student might say, hey, business really is for me, and now I want to take that VE course at the high school. So we're really just trying to provide these opportunities for kids based on their interests, uh, starting at the middle level.
But it doesn't include any sort of extracurricular piece like the one, that the course at the high school?
Not, not, not in the plan at this time.
Right.
Do we have a current teacher who would be willing and able to teach?
So the, as, as on the earlier presentation where I had that if approved, uh, if this gets approved, we have a business teacher currently that would fit into this particular course, and then we would backfill into the computer science piece.
Gotcha.
So yes, we do have someone in mind.
Um, just looking at the estimated annual registration, we have 200 students taking that, that's a, that's a really big amount, but this is a half-year course, so there...
It is a half-year course, and, you know, in conversations with Dr. Grisani and, and, you know, it really will depend on what our needs are in algebra next year. If we feel that we need to have, you know, the reason why we went with a double period in eighth grade was because we thought that there would be tutorials and perhaps a double period would be better than a, a tutorial period. So we really have to look at our data towards the end of this year, and that could be modified, that 200, um, it could probably be a bit lower. But that's, that's what we think as a, a maximum number would be 200.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? And all in favor? Okay, thank you.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the Finley Advisory Program beginning in the 2022-2023 school year, as reviewed with the district's subject matter and educational development councils and is outlined on the attached.
Okay, a motion? Xavier and a second from Bill. I almost, I wish Linda was here.
So an advisory period would basically be an extended homeroom period that would rotate throughout the, the months. So I, in, in case the course description isn't, uh, fully explaining, basically during September, the advisory would be during period one with the homeroom teachers that are assigned. In October, it would take place during period two, November, period three, December, period eight. It would not affect the lunch periods, but that way, students would only, teachers would only miss two periods of instruction throughout the year to have these advisory periods. And during this time, they would be doing community building circles, which basically provides teachers time to meet with students, work with students. They've all been trained in the last year or so in these community circles, where they get to know students, establish those relationships, they talk about things, they get to know one another, and they really create a family type of atmosphere where students are more comfortable sharing what they're going through, talking about what they're going through, and thus it has a really great impact on their connectedness to one another, to their teacher, to the school environment. Attendance is better, and kids overall feel better socially and emotionally and more attached to their school environment. Some topics could include celebrations, gratitude and appreciation, friendship, listening skills, de, dealing with loss, motivation, bullying, um, checking for understanding, building vocabulary on the more educational side, studying habits. So there are a variety of things that can be discussed, and teachers can also take into consideration what might be impacting their particular homeroom group at a particular time during the year and make some adjustments as needed.
Could this be something potentially that could be rolled out to the intermediate level too?
Absolutely, this is something that could be rolled out on a more widespread level. I will say that when Ms. Rothel joined the Finley team, uh, a few years ago, this was something that she was very passionate about, and several of the staff at Finley were equally as passionate, and they really, teacher leadership with Ms. Rothel really took this and ran with it, and we used a lot of the SIG funds to fund all the professional development, buying books for the staff. But the staff is really excited about implementing this for their kids, and they feel that the circles that they've already done with their, with their students has had an impact, and having this advisory period will make it that much more meaningful and effective.
I think it's a great idea, and I think Finley is a great place to start it, it's a really smart choice, you know, the, in seventh and eighth grade. But I, you have, to your point, I think this could be something that could be rolled out to the entire district eventually.
The big difference is, at the intermediate level, they still have a more, I'm going to say extensive time-based connection to the teachers. Uh, so while I, I think it could be a K through 12 process really, but when they get to Finley, it's the first time they really experience, experiencing eight to 10 different teachers, depending on half-year courses, et cetera. There's no, you know, one teacher that they necessarily get to make more than a 40-minute per day connection with, and, and this provides that. And I think there, there is a, there is a, a lot that students experience just in general when they go from grade six, where it's a, a little bit more of a, uh, nurturing one, two, three teacher environment to Finley, where they're, they're now completely departmentalized, and it's from everything to something completely different the next year. So this is, I think, I think it's an important pla, good place to start, if, if nothing else, but I agree with you.
It makes sense too, because seventh and eighth, you know, all the other buildings, you're in there for three years, you know, you're in the high school for four years, but this is a quick turnaround, so I think it really gives you roots, which I think is
That's an excellent, excellent point, and we talk about that all the time. And unfortunately, our, our middle school was built with capacity at, at where it is, so there's no way to, to bring another grade level in. Uh, it's, you're in, you're new to the building, and then you're leaving the building, and this is a way to make a, an additional connection. It's a good point, thank you.
I'm excited about it.
I think it's terrific that Ms. Rothel thought of this a few years ago, but, you know, how fortuitous right now, I mean, this is exactly what our children need, you know, social and emotional learning component. I mean, to have this every day is, it's fantastic, so, well done.
Thank you.
I don't have any objections, but I'm confused a little bit, so let me explain why. So I'm a science math guy, and if we call it a course, I would expect a curriculum where you can measure a student's progress aga, against it. This seems very squishy. You're calling it a course, could it just as easily be called a program?
It's a program, it's not a course.
Well, okay, well, I'm just reading, it's on, you know, new course, yeah, because that, that was my only thing, it's, it's more of a, a support program where we're measuring, it's, like I said, it's very squishy, it's not like you have measurables that you can define every year, because they're going to change depending upon the social, emotional environment that they're working, right?
It's very similar to, you know, at the elementary level, we have, you know, the circle time and the meeting time for the social, emotional program that we have, we use Sanford Harmony, where we talk about things like this with the classroom teacher. But at the middle level, they're really, you know, they're going to math, they're going to science, they're going to all their courses, so this provides a once-a-month opportunity for these types of conversations that are so desperately needed with our seventh and eighth grade students, and, and making sure, again, that they do feel that connection to school, and as they're going through all of their teenage experiences, that they have people that they can count on and talk to at the building. So it isn't a course, it is a program, and it, it's just one period per month.
Yeah. I think the confusing point there is, it's just a generic template that's used to present a new course.
Right.
We, we laid it out as a program, not a course, but that it's, we, we can easily adjust that, it really is meant to be a program, not a course.
Correct.
I'm good there.
Okay, then, all in favor? Thank you. One last one for you.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve CSE, CPSE submissions as delineated.
Motion? From Bill, and a second. From Xavier, all in favor? Everyone, thank you. Back to Mr. Polanski.
Okay, I'm asking the board this evening for approval of personnel items on schedules five, seven, eight, 10, 11, 13, 16, and 22.
A motion, please. Teresa, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone.
All good. Right to Kathy.
Right to Dr. Walker.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through N on this evening's business agenda.
A motion, from Teresa, and a second from Tom. Any questions? All in favor? That's everyone, Xavier, you have announcements?
Yeah, we'd like to thank Mr. Bob Goldberg, who is presenting a donation of the photography equipment, including a digital Canon Rebel XSI camera and a Sigma 18-200 milli, millimeter lens to the Huntington Art Department. Uh, this donation is approximately valued $200, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our second public commentary, same rules apply as the first. So are there any individuals in the community who would like to speak? Okay, then that brings us to our final comments before, well, I'll just wish everybody a happy holiday and, um, a safe new year. Anybody else have comments?
Happy holidays to everyone.
Happy holidays, while, if I just may, one, uh, one comment, if you're still looking for, uh, some Huntington merchandise for the holiday season, uh, Booster Club will be having a. Shamelessly hawking the Booster Club. Uh, the Booster Club trailer pop-up will be, uh, at the high school tomorrow, uh, with new merchandise items, uh, for your holiday needs, and happy holiday to all, thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.
A motion to return. Michelle, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? Thank you all, have a great night, get home safely.